All righty, if we could all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll call this meeting to order at seven o'clock PM. Mr. Deputy Clerk, could you please call the rule?
Bond Crooks.
Here.
Benedetti.
Here.
Cabo Watten. Hornbeck.
Here.
Peruzzi.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Rezepa.
Here.
Coram present, Mayor Rezepa.
Thank you very much. Could we get a motion to excuse Councilman Cabo Watten? Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. First item of business we have here is the minute approval for the August 4th, 2025 meeting.
Let's move.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. We'll move on to our presentations and proclamations. And so we've got a presentation here from the International Wildlife Refuge on their upcoming benefit dinner, and we're fortunate to have a very familiar face here, Ms. Joanne Gagne. So welcome back, Joanne. Happy to have you.
Thank you very much.
If we could get a motion to make this part of the regular meeting?
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, unanimously so ordered. Go ahead, Joanne.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and it's great to be back for different reasons this time. I am here on behalf of the International Wildlife Refuge Alliance to talk about an upcoming event that is sponsored by IRA and that benefits the Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge. So Stephen is pulling up the presentation.
Yeah, for some reason wouldn't open in the initial, that's the flyer, format. Let's see. Ah, it's not opening. Yeah, might have to go there. Yeah, if that's possible. We'll pull it up on the one up there.
Okay.
It's like my PowerPoint isn't popping up unfortunately.
Technology. I'm still not great at it.
Oh yeah, no, that's okay. We'll get it flipped over right here. Maybe. We can see, we do know what's up. There we go.
Okay, so I will be in control of that. Is it in presentation mode? I don't believe it is. I don't think it's in presentation mode here. Yeah, so enable. And slideshow. There we are. There we go. Wait for it.
There you go.
Okay. Yeah, it's still not in there. Yeah. Okay, this will fine. Yeah, this will work.
Okay.
All right. Well, again, I'm here on behalf of IRA, which is the International Wildlife Refuge Alliance, and I'm here to talk about an upcoming event that supports the Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge. So I believe all of you in this room know about the Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge. The gateway is right in our own backyard. We are so fortunate to have the only international wildlife refuge in North America, right in our own backyard. But for the benefit of those listening at home, I'd like to talk just a little bit about the refuge. Again, it is the only international wildlife refuge in North America. And they, the refuge manages over 6,000 acres of land, and they jointly manage, cooperatively manage, over 20,000 acres of land up and down the Detroit River and into Lake Erie. So it's really a wonderful resource that we have right here in our community. And as I mentioned, IRA, of which I am a board member, I've been a board member for over 11 and a half years. And IRA is the official Friends Group for the Detroit River International Wildlife Refuge. And our mission is to support the refuge by raising funds, engage in the community, and advocating for its protection and growth. And this year has been quite challenging from budget cuts and staffing challenges. But we are so proud of the work that is being done at the refuge. Staff has really stepped up. They continue to do a lot of public programming and managing the habitat for the wildlife and invasive species control, many things that really enhance the quality of life for the community here in the southeast Michigan. So it is IRA's mission, as I said, to support this work and to continue advocating on behalf of the refuge. And again, we want to keep this local conservation and recreation resource protected and open for all to enjoy. So that brings us to, the reason that I'm here this evening is to personally invite all of you here, elected officials, as well as everyone in the room, and as well as the visitor, or those that are watching at home, to consider attending our 19th Annual Benefit Dinner fundraiser. It will be held on Thursday, September 25th, from 5:30 to 9:00, and it will be at the Silver Shores Waterfront in Wyandotte, which is right on the banks of the Detroit River. This is our largest and most important fundraiser of the year. Again, if, without this event, we will not be able to help, to support the refuge to the, to what it needs. As a federal agency, fish and wildlife are not, are prohibited from raising funds, applying for grants. They, advocating on their own behalf, they are not able to do those kinds of things. And so this is where the Friends Organization comes in to advocate on behalf of them to the community, to gain community support so that we can, in turn, support the programming and work of the refuge. So, and again, it's a chance for the community to be a part of that and help us in that way to continue a lasting and impactful refuge. So the event highlights, again, I mentioned it's at the waterfront, Silver Shores. If you've not been there, it is an absolutely stunning facility, and it's, hopefully will be a beautiful evening where you can get out and enjoy the riverfront. It'll be a delicious dinner, dessert, and just a nice evening with friends. There will be a live and silent auction, games of chance. So it's going to be a fun evening as well. Most importantly though, we will be able to celebrate the accomplishments of the refuge with a yearly update. And then one of the things that IRA is most excited about is that we spent this past year developing a five-year strategic plan. And so we're going to unveil that at the dinner and talk about what our strategic priorities are, goals, and strategies to accomplish those items. So, well, I'm excited about that. We worked real hard on that strategic plan. So our goal for the event, our goal is to sell this event out this year. For the past several years, since COVID really, our numbers have, have been declining. We haven't had the great turnout and community support that we have enjoyed in past years. So our goal is to sell all 400 seats at this event. And we also would like to secure business and corporate sponsorships. And our goal is to raise at least $75,000 at this event. And again, all of that money will go back into supporting the work of the refuge. This is IRA's biggest fundraiser. It helps us become viable and, so that we can, in turn, support the refuge and their needs. And just as this little guy in the picture reeled in that fish, we would like to reel in some new attendees to this annual benefit dinner, engaging a new pool of refuge supporters and conservation leaders. This is a great opportunity. If you're not familiar with the refuge, have never been there, you want to learn more about it, this is a perfect venue, a perfect event in which to do that. And we also want to ignite a renewed engagement with surrounding communities who directly benefit from the refuge by securing representation from every community at this year's event. So I'm here this evening. I was in Flat Rock last week, not Flat Rock, I'm sorry, Gibraltar last week. I was at the Trenton DDA last week as well. Other members are going to other communities. We are making this presentation to most, as many of the communities that border the refuge as possible so that we can gain their support and have them represented, their communities represented, at the event. And that kind of brings us to our challenge. So we are challenging civic leaders, businesses, community members at large that neighbor the refuge to ensure that your community is represented at the dinner. We're going to have an informal competition, so to speak, between communities to see who will be most represented at the event. So we really encourage you to consider joining us for this and make it known that Trenton stands for the refuge. We are really calling on all of you to be visible champions for conservation, outdoor recreation, and environmental stewardship by attending and being represented at this event. And as you know, the refuge is so important to the city of Trenton. And I know that before I retired, the last three or four years of my career was spent on getting that trail in the ground, that connector. And you all know that that would not have happened if it were not that we had federal lands here in our community. If it were not for the refuge, that would not have happened. So again, Trenton has really benefited a great deal and will continue to benefit from this refuge. And, but we need the community to come out and support it. So while your presence matters, it really demonstrates leadership and commitment to conservation, inspires your community at large, reinforces that regional collaboration, secures the future of the refuge by re-establishing partners and strength, strengthening partnerships. So how to participate? Very easily, many different ways you can participate. Buy tickets, or sponsor a table, or other sponsorship. There's many sponsorship levels as well. You can buy individual tickets, you can sponsor a table of 10. And invite others in your community to attend. Donate toward the silent auction and live auctions. We're always looking for baskets to raffle and have available for the silent auction. Most importantly, spread the word through your networks, through e-blasts, through, you know, through your social media. Getting the word out that you support the refuge and this event will go wonders to help us reach our goal of selling out. You can purchase tickets to reserve your seat by visiting IRA's website, which is www.iwralliance.org. You can also contact our Executive Director, Nicole LaFleur, and her contact information is available on the screen as well. So that is my presentation, and I so thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come back and visit, but also to present to you this evening. And I hope to see all of your smiling faces at the dinner in September.
Thank you a ton, Joanne. We really appreciate not only you coming back, but obviously all that goes into it. For an event like this, it's a big undertaking. So we'll be sure that obviously we get this advertised on all the city channels and stuff. Does anyone have any questions or anything for you, Councilwoman Peruzzi?
Yeah, just, just to let you know, Tim did look a little nervous when you walked in the door.
Tim's doing an awesome job. His entire staff, I'm so proud of what they're doing. They're doing a tremendous job.
Thank you. Anyone else? Thank you very much again, Joanne. We appreciate it.
All right. Hope to see you there.
Yep.
All righty. Yes, it's Thursday, September 25th, and we'll have information posted online as well, too. All right, we'll go to public comment on items, regarding items on today's agenda. This opportunity will have reserved exclusively for items on today's agenda and have another opportunity for all other comment later on in the meeting. Would ask that anyone wishing to speak, please begin with their name and address. Direct all questions through me, and please limit your comments to five minutes. See, we'll keep moving along. Next, we have the 33rd District Court, fines, costs, and fees. I will defer to our court delegate, Councilman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved, received, and placed on file the fines, costs, fees for July 2025 submitted by the 33rd District Court, showing the city, Trenton receiving $21,505.21. I'd like to add a sub note to that, that that is a refund. They didn't, just so people don't panic, they didn't write that many tickets. That is money we got back because the court was under budget, so we get money back from them. So we appreciate that.
Support.
All right. Thank you very much, Councilman. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. Next, we have a couple items I'll actually defer to you, Mr. Deputy Clerk here. First up, a road closure request from Bill Miller.
Okay, we're looking for a motion to approve the road blockage of Belmont Street between Winthrop and Vernon on Sunday, September 7th, 2025, from 11:00 AM to 4:00 PM, under the direction of the Police Department and Department of Public Services.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And I'll have you take this next one as well. From Trenton High School, the Homecoming Parade Road Closure Request.
Okay, so we're looking for a motion to approve the road closure request from Trenton Public Schools for the Homecoming Parade to be held on Friday, October 10th, 2025, under Police Department direction.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Approval of the Homecoming Parade. Thank you all. All right, next we have two items from our DDA Director, Ms. Pacino. First up being the Trenton Art Festival Road Closure Request.
Thank you. Yep, another, another road closure request. This one is for the Trenton Art Festival. That's happening Friday, September 19th to Saturday, September 20th. This will be a closure for West Road from West Jefferson to Riverside, specifically for the Lobster Palooza and their tent for the Lobster buffet. This closure will start at 9:00 AM on the 19th until 8:00 AM on Sunday, the 21st. This had been sent to the clerk's office, who sent it all to concerning departments for approval.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you. And then next, we have the SEMCOG Planning Assistance Grant Agreement.
Yep, so some exciting news. The city of Trenton was awarded $40,000 for the Planning Assistant Grant from SEMCOG for the West Jefferson Streetscape Study. This study will be conducted by Beckett and Rader, and it will basically identify improvements we can make along West Jefferson Avenue from Maple to Harrison. These improvements can be from anything, from pedestrian upgrades, event space, retail amenities, improved lighting, furnishings, enhancement of right-of-ways, and on-street parking solutions. Essentially, we'll be creating a plan. It will be mostly visuals, not the actual construction, but it will give us idea as well as a estimate budgets to work with, so the DDA can plan for the future what projects we want to do. The total cost is $60,000. The SEMCOG Planning Assistant Grants covers $32,740, and the Trenton Downtown Development Authority will be providing the match of the $7,260 and the other $20,000 not funded by the grant. This was budgeted in our fiscal budget from '25-'26, and the grant agreement has been reviewed by the city attorney. I'm asking you guys today to approve the SEMCOG Planning Assistant Grant Agreement, along with the Trenton Downtown Development Authority matching contribution of $20,000, $27,260.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilwoman Hornbeck, Councilwoman Hornbeck, sorry.
I just want to say, congratulations and good job. I know you've worked hard on getting this done, and it will definitely help the DDA kind of move forward and plan the next few years of all the fun projects that we can do. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Here.
Councilwoman Rodriguez?
I just wanted to say thank you so much. Great job. I was really excited when I was reading this and the agenda. And what I was even more excited was the fact that you're going to be hosting community open houses and collaborating with the stakeholders. That's really great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Anyone else? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Thank you.
All right, we'll go over to our city administrator for this one petition to divide and combine property here.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor and Council. Before you have Resolution 2025-20, Petition to Divide Property from petitioner Mary K. Perrino. This has been through the Planning Commission, and it meets all the criteria to divide this property. Since it's brief, I will read the whereas. Whereas, it is now petitioned by Mary K. Perrino to the Trenton City Council for the purpose of dividing the following property located in the city of Trenton, Michigan, described as follows. Common address, 5350 Laythrop, Trenton, Michigan, 48183. Parcel ID 54-025-01-0029-307. Subject to any partake, and used, or deed for street, road, or highway purposes, or any other recorded easements. Whereas, by dividing the lot, they would be taxed as such. Now therefore be resolved that the Trenton City Council does hereby approve the division of the above-described property and be divided and assessed for ad valorem purposes in accordance with the survey attached, Exhibit A herein and incorporated herein by reference. Be it further resolved that the parcels shall receive separate tax ID identification numbers. Be it further resolved that the city clerk cause a copy of this resolution to be recorded with the Office of the Registered Deeds for Wayne County and a copy to be forwarded to the City Assessor and the Wayne County Assessment and Equalization Division, adopted and proven pass by this council of Trenton on the 18th day of August, 2025.
So moved.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion on that? Seeing none, it is unanimously so ordered. And thank you, Dean. All right, we've got three items from our wastewater treatment superintendent here as well. First up being a request to purchase used forklift for the treatment plant. Ms. Wilson?
Thank you. I am requesting a purchase to, purchase a new, new to us, but used forklift for the wastewater treatment plant. Our current forklift is from 1987, and I found out it's no longer being made. So therefore, it's getting harder and harder to find parts and repairs for it. We use the forklift at the treatment plant quite often throughout any given day, whether it's moving chemicals, or pumps, or parts, or unloading, you know, unloading trucks and things. I did look at two different quotes that I presented, and the one that I thought works best for us is the 2015 Mitsubishi from Morrison Electrical Equipment in the amount of $15,500. This particular forklift does come with a 30-day warranty, and they're also willing to give us a $500 trade-in on our old forklift. This was an item that we did budget for in the current budget. Therefore, I'm asking authorization to purchase this particular forklift from Morrison Industries in the amount of $15,500.
So moved.
Support.
Support.
Moved and supported. Councilwoman Bond Crooks?
Yeah, just a question. How much would the new one be?
Um, anywhere from about 30 to 40.
Forty.
It all, it all depends on what comes with it and different things. The one that I, I actually, this one we picked, actually has a cab on it, so it's enclosed, which, because we use it year-round. I mean, in the middle of winter, we have to move stuff and do stuff. So to purchase that particular one, you're probably talking 50 to 60. So I think this particular forklift, or what we're getting, is actually, would be work for us.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Councilman Peruzzi?
Yes, what, what do you expect the life expectancy of this used vehicle to be?
Well, the last one lasted 38 years, so I'm hoping with the right maintenance and upkeep and everything we do, I would hope to get at least another 25 in it.
Okay, do you have any plans to set aside monies in the future to budget for a new one?
Of course. I mean, we will. If it's something, if it's something you think that maybe I should do now, I mean, we can table this and move forward with that, but I thought with the current.
Table this. I'm just trying to understand where we're going to go moving forward, and that's, that's why I asked that. That's all.
Yeah, no, I, I mean, I think obviously, like I said, this one's 38 years, and we kind of, we're getting toward the end of its life. And so when we went out to find used ones, the kind of, this was the ballpark we found, anywhere from like 2015 to 2017, in that particular area.
All right, thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
So when they're using the forklift, is it primarily used for the outdoor activities and work tasks that they're doing?
Yes, yes.
So is it driven throughout the day? Because my only concern is how many hours are on them?
Right, right. No, it's not driven every day. I mean, it could be various things. We have chlorine and sulfur tanks that we have to unload and load when the truck comes in. We have a lot of, basically all of our chemicals, other than permanganate, come in some kind of container that we have to offload. So we do do that year-round. Like I said, if we have maintenance, most of our parts are kind of heavy and big. It's nothing that you can just carry yourself. So obviously, the forklift doesn't go inside ever. There's no building that our forklift can go, other than like a garage or something, but it doesn't go in. So usually, they move the parts around.
I'm just hoping that, you know, with the age of this particular one, that it's going to last long enough. And I was just curious, how many hours are actually on the one that you're going to receive? Do we know?
Did that say? Yes, it says 5,800.
Okay, that's not too bad.
No, because actually, I got some other quotes that were in like the 10,000, you know, 10,000, 11,000, you know, hours and stuff. Some of the other ones we looked at. I believe that it says here, this one is 5,835 hours.
Okay, I must have missed that if it was in there, but thank you so much. I appreciate it. We always appreciate your work.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Julie. Next one we've got is the Rockwell Automation Service Agreement Renewal.
So the next item I have is approval for our yearly Rockwell Automation Service Agreement. This is something we renew yearly through McNock and McKay, their local Rockwell representative. This support gives us 24-hour support, updates, and security for our SCADA system and the numerous Allen Bradley products we have throughout the plant. This particular approval is for the first year of a three-year renewal. This is something we're obviously always going to have to have, so it is my recommendation that we do a three-year renewal. That way... That way, with going with three years, we can lock in this price, the same price for the next three years. And so I'm therefore recommending or asking for your approval to purchase the service agreement through McNamara-Kay at a cost of $33,347.38.
With some...
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. And then lastly here, the Fishback Local Limits Evaluation.
Yes, the last item I have is I'm asking your approval to move forward to have Fishback Engineering do our local limits evaluation for us. We got a new NPDS permit last fall, and in that permit, we have to do a local limits evaluation within the first year of the permit. It's something I have to submit to Eagle by November 1st, so I'm asking your approval to have Fishback conduct this local limits for us at a cost of $8,500. This is something that I did budget for because I did know it was coming, it was coming up. So therefore, like I said, I'm asking your approval for this through Fishback.
So moved.
Support. Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Councilman Peruzzi?
Emily and I are just noticing the same thing. It says 18.5 here. Is that different than?
$18,500.
Okay. And will this service be done by the Eagle deadline?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Councilman. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you, Julie.
Thank you.
All right, looks like we've got one late communication. Mr. Deputy Clerk, if you could take that one as well, too, from the Vintage Market Witch's Night Out Event.
Okay, so the Witch's Market event, they're looking to, for a motion to approve the special event application from the Vintage Market to hold a Witch's Night Out on Saturday, October 25th, 2025, from 4:00 to 9:00 p.m. and approve the road closure of St. Joseph on both sides of West Jefferson, ending at the alley, under the direction of the Department of Public Services and the Police Department.
With so moved. Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. Thank you very much. Excited to have that back again. For our dispersments and statements and then our reports, I'll go to our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilwoman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Moved to approve the authorized dispersments, August 18th, 2025, the amount of $3,497,693.49.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered.
Received and placed on file the following reports. The financial summary, July 31st, 2025. Scheduled investment and cash on hand, July 31st, 2025. City Beautiful Commission Minutes, June 4th, 2025. Historical Commission Minutes, July 14th, 2025. Traffic Safety Commission Minutes, June 4th, 2025. And the Police Department Monthly Report, July 2025.
Support.
Moved and supported. Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's unanimously so ordered. All right, thank you very much, Councilman. Sure. All right, just very briefly on my end here, as we go to other council business. As folks who are watching heard Angela mention earlier, we've got our Art Festival and Lob Stober Fest coming up a little early on that front, but that'll be September 19th and 20th, Friday and Saturday downtown. The murals will be going up before then for a few days, but that'll be the big emphasis on the festival. So really exciting stuff. We're really happy to have that coming back this year as well, with both of those festivals being able to combine, too. So should be a great weekend around town. And then lastly, while we'll, you know, have some more thorough updates sometime next month, just on where things are at in terms of progress on the municipal building bond, I did just want to be able to let folks know that we officially have closed on the purchase of the Trenton Motor Inn as part of this process, too. So more information to come as we keep at it with this land acquisition piece of it, but a very big piece of the puzzle has been laid down right there for us so far. So I'm sure folks have seen our announcements about that in the past, but at least at this point, still moving along in the right direction there, too. So more to come, but just wanted to give that token of good news for everyone here. So with that, I will defer first tonight is actually, once again, our Mayor Pro Tem, Councilwoman Benedetti.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, I'm glad to hear that we're moving forward with the bond proposal issues and getting a police and fire station off the ground and stuff going with that. Also want to say, I think they did a great job with, last week, with the Taste of Down River that was through Trenton. See, McNamara-Kay had a pretty good crowd. Seemed to go well. The weather was rather nice out. It wasn't too hot, but it was nice. It was nice to see all those people down there and use of the lots and things like that, get people shopping and moving around town, so. Besides that, I have nothing else, Mayor.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Hornbeck?
I just want to piggyback on Councilwoman Benedetti's comments about the Taste of Down River. It was a great turnout. The food was great. I thought it was pretty hot out, but maybe that's just me. Yeah, it was really nice to see so many people come downtown for that event. I also just want to say good luck to all the students and educators returning to school in the next couple of weeks. Our next meeting will be after my first day, so I'll be looking a little tired, I'm sure, but just good luck to everybody and hope it's a great first day.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. Councilman Peruzzi?
Yes, I just have a question for Dean. Can you give an update, please, on the Riverside property?
The Riverside property continues to be in litigation. I have a meeting with the judge September 3rd. There's still some outstanding issues. The dirt needs to be spread that's down there. There's an eyebrow that needs to be paved at the end of Truax. The grading plan has to be approved and put in place. The lots, the asphalt that's there needs to be pulverized. And then there's also the land swap acquisition, swapping or whatever, that has to occur before the global agreement, all components of it would be fulfilled.
I got asked a lot, and I thank you for giving that explanation.
Okay. Didn't ask me for a time limit either. It's good.
I messed it. And it wouldn't be a good one, anyway.
Do you have anything else, Councilman? Thank you. All right, and don't have Councilman Campbell-Wattin here this evening. Councilwoman Rodriguez?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for all the volunteers at the Taste of Trenton, Down River. I heard it was excellent, and they had a wonderful time. And I also wanted to bring to light the Trenton Accessibility Report, which is at the bottom of the agenda, and it was really great. I appreciate all the work that went into it. Many know that my father's last 17 years of his life was disabled due to a catastrophic car accident, so I am a strong fighter and advocate for accessibility for persons with disabilities and making sure that things are a lot easier for them and breaking down the barriers. And I'm just so proud of Trenton being on the forefront and really working very hard on that. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you very much, Councilwoman. And Councilwoman Boncrux?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I have nothing tonight.
All right.
Thank you.
Of course. Go to our other elected officials. Mr. Deputy Clerk, do you have anything else?
I'll just say that City Hall will be closed on Monday, September 1st for Labor Day, so the next regular council meeting will be on Tuesday, September 2nd at 7:00 p.m.
Great, thank you very much. Our Assessor, Ms. Barnett, got anything?
Nothing tonight. Don't see Mr. McCullough here. Anything?
All right, nothing from the Treasurer's Office.
I know, no.
Any of our department has to have anything tonight. All right, not seeing any there. We'll go to public comment now. Anyone wishing to speak, we ask that you begin with your name and address. Please limit your comments to five minutes and ask that you direct all questions through me.
Ms. Loraine Rady at 2006...
Oh, if you don't mind going up to the microphone, please. There you go. That way they can hear you. Oh, that is okay.
I had a fall, tripped on the sidewalk. That has nothing to do with it. Hi, my name is Loraine Rady at 2006 West Jefferson, and we went up north, we came back, and our air conditioning was working, and then the next day it wasn't working, and we called expert heating and cooling because we have a new air conditioner and a furnace, and a wire tripped into the furnace. And then, so they got it working. It worked for one day, and the next day it went out again. So I talked to a neighbor yesterday and asked this lady Kathy, I said, "Have you been having any outages lately?" She says, "Oh, yeah, we had one a couple days ago." And she said, "And I talked to my husband, and he said that DTE is taking all the good wiring out and putting all this cheaper stuff in, but then they're raising all the taxes on us." So, I mean, what's going to be next? Our refrigerator? I mean, we're going to lose all our food? I mean, luckily, this new air conditioner, they've designed it so when it does trip into the furnace, the wire, that we don't lose a brand-new air conditioner. It was like $9,000 for a furnace and an air conditioner that we got before Christmas. And what are they doing with digging up all these roads? What are they doing over here? It's ridiculous. I mean, if, we're going to, we've never had power outages in three years on this side of Trenton. Usually, it's on the other side of Trenton. Now we're getting power outages.
When did you most recently have one, do you know? Because to be honest, this is actually the first I've heard of.
This is the first you've heard of it? Well, my girlfriend, she, she works in her home, in her mobile home, and she works for an ambulance billing company, and she had an AT&amp;T outage on Monday night.
Oh, so it was AT&amp;T or a power outage?
Well, it doesn't matter. We're having outages all over this area, and it's intermittent. And then I talked to the neighbor across the street who's just staying there temporarily because my neighbor passed away, so she's just staying there. And she said, "A couple days ago, the lights just kept flickering and flickering and flickering." So I don't know what's going on. I mean, I don't know what this DTE is doing.
Yeah, that's...
It needs to be checked into.
Yeah, we could definitely reach out to DTE. I'm glad you brought it up.
You know, my husband's bipolar manic. If he doesn't get any sleep with air conditioning, he don't sleep. I'm going nuts with him right now, you know? And he just went to the doctor today, so. But anyway, to link a long story short, that's one question. The second one is, I'm trying to figure out why the showers are cold.